Brought into your overall tax rate, the county, the watersheds, all of the school districts, those types of things. And between 2018 to 2019, there was a slight decrease and that decrease continued again into 2020 for your tax rate. At the end, at the end of 2019, it was 31.52%. And then that decreased down to 31.48% for the 2020 tax year as well. So you've continued to maintain and control that overall city tax rate, at least the portion that's in your control. So that's great to see. As we move to the next slide, the, looking at the actual tax paid on median home values by cities over several comparable cities in the Twin Cities metro area, you can see Eden Prairie finds itself definitely on the, on the lower end of these taxes for the, for the median home value. It's the City of Eden Prairie, that fourth column from the left-hand side of our graph. So you can see it, it's, it's very well situated in that area and you continue to have the lower surrounding tax rate and overall tax burden on, on the citizens as far as the cities' portion of that tax rate. So great to see as well. Looking at the, the actual revenues per capita for, for the city compare over the last three years as well as compared to a, a per capita revenue calculation for cities in a similar size category that the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor generates data for, that's that 20,000 to 100,000 in population. And as you can see, on a per capita basis, revenues increased from, increased $218 between 2018 and 2019 for the city. And the largest driver of that was the municipal state aid financing that the city received and drew down this last year for all the various road projects. And that also included a, an additional advance of about $2 million on future allotments as well. When you look at the, the city compared to the statewide average, the, the city has, is $244 more on a per capita basis for, for similar sized cities. And really the largest difference there is going to be the, the intergovernmental revenues, especially for 2019, that additional MFA funding. But then on top of that, the property taxes. The, the other thing to note on there as well is the intergovernmental revenue, that LGA line, the City of Eden Prairie has not received any local government aid since 2003. That puts you in a very good situation so that when there are potential economic downturns and the, the governor or the legislature are looking at potential unallotments of that local government aid, the city is not going to be impacted by that. So it's, it's great to know that you're, you're controlling your destiny with that, if you want to say, as opposed to being reliant on the, on the legislature to continue that funding for you. When we look at the expenditure side of the per capita results or the analysis for the, the city in 2019 compared to 2018, there was an increase of $229 between those two years. And the largest driver of that is going to be the capital laying construction for the city over the last couple of years. As everybody on the council is well aware, this, the city has made significant investment into its capital projects, the infrastructure and all of the projects going on, especially with the, with the light rail coming down towards the city as well. There's been some definite significant increases in that capital program over the last couple of years. And then in the, on a per capita basis, the expenditures compared to similar sized cities, again, there was $87 more than similar sized cities, according to the, the State Auditor's office. And really the biggest piece of that is going to be in the, the parks and recreation category. As you can see on here, that was $199 for the, for the city in 2019 compared to about $104 for other similar sized cities, at least according to this calculation. And then the other notable pieces was just the, the police and then the fire as well. And then looking at just some additional financial highlights and accomplishments for the city here over the last year, the, the financial statements for the city are going to be submitted to the, the OSA or the Office of the State Auditor in accordance with state statute. The reporting deadline for that is June 30th and that'll be very easy to, to be met by, by Sue and Tammy and the rest of the finance team at the city. As well as the, the comprehensive annual financial report will also be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association by June 30th as well for their certificate of achievement program that the city has been participating in since 1990 and has received that award every single year. And then in addition, the, the city continues to maintain that AAA bond rating. It's, it's one of about 28 cities in Minnesota with that designation of the almost 350 to 360 cities that are analyzed there. So the city is sitting in a very good spot as far as their overall bond rating, which is great to see as well. And then finally, just a, a quick mention of the emerging issues. We've been mentioning this standard now over the last couple of years, and it will be a significant standard that is going to be impacting the city here coming up soon. The, the date on here says it's going to be effective for December 31st, 2020. However, the, the standard is probably going to be formally pushed off by, by the GAZB or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board for one more year, won't be applicable to December 31st, 2021. That is going to be their, their response in regards to the, the COVID-19 pandemic that, that all local governments are dealing with across the country. But this standard is going to be forcing the city to account for leases and lease transactions a little bit differently than what they've historically done. So it's going to be some significant work upfront by, by city staff, but it, it definitely have time to get that accomplished now over, especially the next year and a half to get that ready for that implementation. So at, at this time, I just want to thank everybody at the, the city. We've enjoyed working with, with everybody at the city now this past year for the audit as well as the last five years as we are reaching the end of our, our contract with the city. So we are, sad we won't necessarily probably get to work with you here in the future for a few years probably, but we did enjoy our time and we just want to thank Sue, Tammy and the rest of the finance team as well as everybody else at the city that we've worked with on making the audit, a successful audit in partnership over that timeframe. And then we are open to any questions anybody on the, on the council may have.
Chris, John, first I want to thank you and CLA for all the work that you've done and particularly our own finance staff led by Sue Kachiver. They do a great job. And again, as proud as I am of the city, I'm also proud of the staff that under Rick Getchow people have been hired or he inherited legacy employees that are amazing. So we just are really proud of our employees. Counsel, let me just say to the public before I ask you if you have more questions, we did leave on this at a virtual meeting this evening, virtual. And so we have done a little bit of a deeper dive ourselves. This is not the first time we're seeing it, even though in a few moments we're going to vote on it. Counsel, any additional questions or comments you wish to make? Anybody? Okay. We will need a motion. So if somebody could make a motion and let's see, how was I doing it last time? Were you identifying yourself? And I know I tipped, I think I repeated that out. So maybe identify yourself, right? And then make a mo, or I can just call on you, I can see your hand raised. So Councilmember Narayan, would you like to make the motion?
I'll move the motion.
Why don't we go ahead and say it just because it's our audit for the year?
Oh, sorry, I haven't heard the whole thing. I accept the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So Councilmember Aho seconded. And as I so learned on the adjournment in the last meeting, every single vote has to be roll call at a virtual meeting by state statute. So could I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Has this unanimously? Thank you. All right, we have a couple proclamations this evening. The first one is Senior Awareness Month proclamation. I believe I'm turning it over to Jay Lothammer. Mr. Getchow, do you want it in between or can we go right to Jay?
Yeah, you can go right to Mr. Lothammer.
All right, Mr. Lothammer.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. This is extremely unusual. We usually have a group of seniors with you in the council meeting from our senior advisory group in order to talk about a few things that are upcoming during Senior Awareness Month. And obviously, that can't happen right now. And also our senior center has been closed for a while. And it really sheds light on how many seniors we engage on a daily basis. And I know I've told you before that we see hundreds at the community center almost every morning doing some of the group exercise programs. In addition, all of the people that stop in at the senior center for the many programs that happen there throughout the day, the trips that they take, our appreciation lunches that we have for the, all of those things won't be happening at this time. I can tell you though, that we are still engaging tiers that are stepping up to do calling trees. Our local CERT members have been helpful in getting needs to the seniors. We're putting out a newsletter again to them. And even some of the seniors themselves have been engaging each other in some of the virtual content that we've been using, whether it's been Zoom or other types of formats in order to continue some of their groups and some of their socialization that they do. But it has really brought home that we play a large role in not just their physical wellbeing and their social activity, but their spirit is really lifted whenever they are engaged with each other and engaged with some of the staff that they work with at our senior center and community center. So I just wanted to highlight that and we hope to be able to get back physically with them soon. We're targeting that as probably unfortunately, one of our last facilities that will reopen just because of the nature of the population and wanting to make sure that we can be as safe as possible for them and it's safe for them to come and be around us. In the meantime, we're going to keep communicating with them as best as we can. We're going to continue to encourage them to meet with each other and to be active and to keep up that social contact. That's very, very beneficial, especially to some of them that may live alone and we have been their only way of getting out and being in contact with people. So to note as well, so thank you, Mayor, and I'll let you read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Lothammer. We were having, I'm not sure if the connectivity issues were apparent to people at home or will be on the recording, but on my screen here in City Hall, we were having a little bit of connectivity issue with you there. But I think we understood what you said. Thank you so much. I just want to also say that you get the opportunity this evening to engage with a few more seniors here on the City Council, including myself. I will read the proclamation. Whereas the increasing number of seniors in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses and government. And whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the expertise, the needs and resources of our seniors and awareness improves participation and action. And whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal, pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom which will impact our future. And whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older senior adults. And whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community. Now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim May 2020 as Senior Awareness Month, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on this 5th day of May 2020, Ronald A. Case Mayor. So thank you, Jay, for all the work that you do and your staff does as well. And we have an amazing senior center here in Eden Prairie that I hope will get open as soon as we possibly can safely. Our second proclamation is about National Police Week and I believe I'm turning it right over to Chief Greg Weber.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. You know, for many years as a police department, we've attended a May 15th ceremony every year at the state Capitol to recognize those police officers from the state of Minnesota that have died in the line of duty. Obviously this year with the social distancing requirements, that event is not going to take place on the 15th. The proclamation before you this evening will recognize National Police Week that will take place next week.
All right. I'm assuming that's my cue.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for all that you do as well. We have a phenomenal police department and I probably should call the fire department as well. Amazing public safety here in Eden Prairie. Here's the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas the police officers of the Eden Prairie Police Department have played a critical role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens of our community since January 1st, 1973, when our department started. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the members of the Eden Prairie Police Department who are deeply committed to selflessly protecting the residents of Eden Prairie regardless of danger or hazard to themselves. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, nearly 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas May 15th, 2020 is designated as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Ron Case, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, and on behalf of the Eden Prairie City Council hereby proclaim the week of May 10th to 16th, 2020 as National Police Week in the City of Eden Prairie and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the country, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on May 5th, 2020. Thank you, Chief, again for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel. We are moving on to approval of the agenda. Is there any, are there any additions or is there, are there any one of you that would like to speak to the agenda? Any additions? Okay, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Freiber.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nelson. No further discussion, I'm assuming. Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, we only had the one meeting at our April 21st, first virtual meeting ever, which was a regular council meeting. So any items or anything to question or correct within the minutes from the April 21st meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So approved.
Councilmember Nelson, is there a second? I'll take Brad, Councilmember Rahm as a second since he raised his hand to make the motion. If there's no further discussion, Sam, as I'm asking that kind of a question, I'm not just doing it out loud, I'm actually watching the faces of my colleagues so I can see if they raise their hand. So although, actually we need a roll call vote. Please proceed.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Getchow, we have an item 8G that I believe is, has some corrections on it. Do you want to speak to that? And then I'll ask the council if they have any other consent calendar questions.
Yes, Mayor, we had an update to item, consent item G as it related to the amount of money that was part of that quotation. So that got sent out to you and reviewed by our city attorney.
So with that correction or change, Counsel, any other items A through K that you wish to discuss or have pulled temporarily? Okay, seen none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Councilmember Freiber.
I'll move, move to approval of the items A through K on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Aho, seconds. Without any further discussion, those in favor say, oh, roll call. I'll remember that. I'm catching myself at least this time. Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, thank you again. So we do have a public hearing this evening. We did not have one at our last first virtual meeting. So this will be creative new exercise as well in taking public comment if we need to. So Mr. Getchow, I think I'll turn it over to you and I believe we have a developer's presentation tonight that will be as well, virtual.
We do. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. You may recall Smith Village, the development on near 212 and Eden Prairie Road. This is the third piece of that development. You previously approved a 100-unit senior cooperative by Applewood Point that's under construction and 58 units of workforce housing by Common Bond, as you can clearly see is under construction off of Eden Prairie Road near Highway 212. This is a proposal for six villas at, at that site as well. The applicant is proposing to develop a one acre parcel into six single-family detached villas. As I mentioned, that would be part of the overall Smith Village project. And as you said, Mayor, the developer applicant is here virtually to provide an overview of the project and staff and the applicant could answer any questions that you may have along with what may come of the public hearing.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
So I believe we have Mike Haley on, on the, at the meeting here to present.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Good, thank you. If, if you recall, some of you may recall, we had approved in conjunction with the Applewood Point and with Common Bond's building, six townhouses, two buildings with three units attached. I'm back here in front of you tonight to ask for one simple change to it, and that is to eliminate the common walls of the townhouses and instead of having six townhouses, having six villas. I want to thank the staff for guiding me with this and supporting me through this for the last few months on this. I want to assure you as the presentation will show you, I think Johnny has got the, the PowerPoint there that he can, if he flashes to page one there, there, I have a partner, Hanson Builders, which is a family-owned operation that has been in business for about 50 years and is the sixth largest builder in, in Minnesota or in the metro, I should say. And perhaps most importantly, they're, they strive and are one of the, one of the minority, I guess, of sustainable builders in the sense of they strive to do the green path dedication as far as, as principles of LED, et cetera, all, all good construction practices. So the, if I go to the next page, Johnny, please, the, the only change again is, is that the six villas will be independent, freestanding, detached. The net effect of this deleting the common walls ironically is we actually increase the green space. We of course increase the privacy for the homeowners. And frankly, it also allows us to increase the landscaping because we're going to have more green space. We, we, I have to admit to you that we have been caught a little bit by surprise because over the last several months, it has become apparent to us that our prime buyers for these, these six villas are the children of the Applewood Point buyers. It seems that when we went to, we have not put these on the market literally, but through word of mouth more than anything, we've been contacted and it turns out that perhaps 75% of the people that have contacted us, their parents are buying one of the cooperative units at Applewood. And frankly, their, their desire is, is for their children, their grandchildren to be close to their grandparents, which is, to be candid with you, it was a real twist to me. But because of that, that was our primary motivation to separate the units and to do the six villas. And again, thank, thanks to staff, we were able to create more green space and we think it'll obviously get more privacy. But for these families, it'll be, it'll be a really, a huge benefit to be able to walk over literally and see their grandparents and vice versa. So Johnny, would you go on the next page, please? So the, the prime, the two primary benefits for you, for me, for our owners is, is that we are going to have more flexibility in design because we don't have to, have to deal with the common wall, which will allow us to create perhaps semi-custom homes anyway. They'll all be, they'll all have somewhat the same character because Hanson Builders has their own in-house architect and he does all of the design work. And so throughout this PowerPoint, you'll see various pictures that depict that there's a consistency of the homes. And again, staff has been supportive in this and we appreciate it. The, we still will have a homeowners association that will take care of the snow and the grass. The price range is still going to be approximately the same. And again, it, it will give each of the homeowners substantially more privacy doing this. Johnny, please? So just to reiterate, the only true difference in the, in our proposal versus what was approved perhaps almost a year ago, is that we've eliminated the common wall. And so, and because of that, we have more green space, more privacy, it will probably have a much less massive look on the street as far as instead of having two large buildings, it'll be six individual homes. Johnny, please? And again, I, I want, as it mentioned, as it's mentioned on this plate, page, Hanson Builders is, is designated as what they call a green path builder and they do achieve the highest home energy rating systems for their homes. And they're proud of it and I'm proud of it. And I, I know for most of you on the council, maybe all of you, this is an important factor for, for going forward with new construction. So the sustainability factor is huge. And John, please? So again, I just want to mention that our motivation for this is because of the Applewood Point. And I apologize because in some respects, as I've apologized to staff, I feel like I've wasted some of your time. If I would have known this a year ago, I would have got this right the first time and I appreciate your, your patience with me. In the following couple pages that John flips through, the, they show the different floor plans that we're contemplating. They're basically from about 2,300 to 3,000 square feet. All the lots are walkouts, so all of them potentially could have walkout lower levels. They'll all be sprinkled, I mean, as far as the grass, the snow, the, it will be all maintained by the homeowners association. The guest parking we had before, none of that has changed. Again, the only significant change in our proposal really is, is the deletion of these common walls. So the last page shows an aerial view, so to speak, of what, what it will look like. John, if you flip that there. And so you get a feel for them. So you can easily see how we, by eliminating these common walls, we've, we've created a lot more privacy. So I appreciate your consideration and thank you.
Mr. Getchow, would you share with all of us what, how we flexed in this virtual environment to still try to continue to include as much public comment as we could? How we made it available if people wanted to try to give us messages in advance and how we're going to allow it this evening? And then Counsel, if you can maybe oblige us just for a moment, you'll have all the chances you want to ask all kinds of questions if you want, but maybe try to get this public hearing piece of it. Is that fine if I can go ahead and proceed down that road? And then we'll make sure that Counsel gets all the opportunity to question as well. But Mr. Getchow, could you just share with everyone how we availed to the public in this virtual environment, the ability to give comment?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as you know, with, with development projects, we do published and mailed notice, mailed notice to people within a certain vicinity of the proposed project. And in both the published and the posted and mailed notice, we put in instructions to be able to contact the city to get information, to get into this meeting ahead of time, if that was done by- that was done by noon of the meeting date. And then you can see for the actual public hearing itself, and you can see it on the screen right there, we give people the ability to call in live right now during the public hearing as if they were at the meeting, ready to speak, and they would come into the virtual environment and we would allow them the opportunity to present information at the public hearing. So they could do that in advance or they could do it as the meeting is occurring.
Okay. So Mr. Gettrill, I'm going to ask you in a moment who, who we have been notified already of, and then if anybody's called in. But before I do that, council, why don't we give you an opportunity to ask a question before we open up the public hearing? Then we'll open it and then we'll still allow you a chance to continue to ask questions. So Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, you're on mute. You're still on. There you go.
Okay. Is there electric vehicle plugins in the garages?
That is an excellent question. I don't know the answer, Ms. Nelson. My understanding is, is that you mean, I assume you're referring to a stand, as a standard feature?
Correct.
There, there is an electric plugin, but I, are you looking for a specific, a higher voltage or something?
I don't know what it is that it needs, but I would like to see whatever is needed by an electric car to have the plugin already there.
Councilmember Aho, is that a 220? I think just, didn't we decide that our last time this came up?
Yes, that's correct. It's either a 220 or 200 volt. So as long as it's, it's pre-wired, it's pretty inexpensive to pre-wire that in and let the homeowner decide if they want to put the rest of the, the rest of the utility pieces in there. But as long as the pre-wiring is there, it makes it simple.
Excellent. We can clarify that later. And if we wish to put it in as a council condition, that's a pretty cheap and easy one to do. And usually the proponents are volunteering it. We'll see if that's true in this case.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
If I get, I, I will stipulate to that. That's fine.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That's great. Counsel, any other, before we open up to the public, any other council questions or clarifications? Again, you'll get another chance. Councilmember Nelson?
Will you have, allow people if they want to put solar panels on the roofs to be able to do that either now or in the future? Or will there be something saying they can't do it?
Councilman Nelson, I, we have no problem with that and we're not stipulating that in our covenants that it's not, that it's not allowed. So the only consideration will be if the city will have any, any criteria as far as the installation of them.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else before we open it up? Okay, Mr. Gettrill, I'm not sure if you turn it over to our IT or how this works now, but I'm throwing the ball to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I've been in touch with Johnny, our slide mover, and I'm told that there isn't anybody on the meeting right now who wishes to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. Did we have anybody that contacted us prior to this by email or text or left a voicemail message?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay. So we have no person attending this in terms of giving public comment. So let me, let's, why don't we do this just to make it a little bit cleaner? Let's go ahead and close the public hearing. I know we may be able to move right to the next step, but if you don't mind us doing that. And let's have a roll call vote on closing the public hearing. First, I need a motion and a second.
I would move to close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Freiberg, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Hi.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Narayan?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Case?
Hi. All right. Moving on. Thank you so much. Moving on to the, then the rest of this, well, it's not a public hearing, but the rest of this issue. Counsel, any further questions, any comments, anything else you'd like to discuss before we make the motion to, on, on the entire proponent's proposal? Okay. The only thing I might add, and this is really just clarification and a, something just because it's come up the last two times with public hearings, is that, Mr. Gettrill, this is really aimed towards you. Could we, and this one might have predated this, so I'm not judging staff at all with this, but could we begin to have staff have that conversation with every proponent coming in with really any housing development, apartment, single-family, townhome attached, about the electric car plug-in availability? Eventually, even with apartments in every stall, I don't know that we're quite there yet. We might be. But certainly with single-family homes, I think we're there, right? And so that way, every proponent will just bring it in. And we did find, thank you tonight, our proponent for so quickly agreeing, but we, we have found in the last two instances that it's not, to run a 220 line in or, or Ms. Aho, 240, if I'm saying it wrong, is, is not an exorbitant cost. So, Mr. Gettrill, just a thought that if we could have that as a standard part of our conversation when a proponent brings in a plan to our staff. Counsel, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Is there someone that would make a motion? Yes, Councilmember Freiberg?
I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a guide plan change from medium-high density residential to medium-density residential on one acre and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on one acre and approve the first reading of an ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers and a zoning district change from RM 2.5 to R1 9.5 on one acre and adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat of three lots into seven lots on one acre.
Well done. Is there a second? Councilmember Narayan, second. Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Hi.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Narayan?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson? Mayor Case?
Hi. Thank you again. All right. Congratulations. And that, that completes that entire project then between the Common Bond and the senior, what are we calling them condominiums in the back and then these six homes. So it's nice to see that entire project now fully approved and hopefully being built in, in the days to come. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Michael. We're looking forward to it. Looks like a nice development for our community.
It should be. Thank you, Gary.
I like the house better, too.
It'll be ready for electric cars, too.
All right. I'm thinking the, possibly the age range of the demographic that you're attracting there might be interested in that. But we're also looking out, of course, for what's happening imminently in the next three, four, five, 10 years. And we just think to build everything now, electric car ready is the way to go.
I think it's wise. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We are down now to the payment of claims. Any council member have a question of payment of claims or something they would like staff to respond to? If not, is there a council member that would like to make the motion to approve the payment of claims? Councilmember Narayan?
I move the approval of payment of claim. I submit it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Freiberg. All right. If we don't have any further discussion, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aho?
Hi.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Narayan?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Case?
Hi. All right. We don't have any reports of council members unless you want to, in the moment, come up with something, nor city manager. And therefore, we're going to have a report from the community development director on the CDBG funds that, just to let the public know that we had a conversation about this at our workshop earlier this evening. So, Mr. Gettrill, I think I'll turn it to you briefly just to intro whatever else and then we'll move on. I believe, is it Jonathan that's here tonight, I believe, or?
Actually, I believe, I believe he is, but I believe Ms. Jeremiah is going to give the presentation. So I'll turn it over to her.
Yes, Your Honor, Council. I'm having some trouble with the audio going in and out. Are you hearing me okay?
We are, but the signal is definitely weak and I'm not sure if it's weak coming from our, because all of you are here at City Hall. So you'd think that we had some good fiber connected here, but yeah.
Janet, are you on a Wi-Fi connection or are you wired?
I'm on the Wi-Fi.
And maybe part of it.
I would suggest that we, we run network cables for you and so you can run on a wired connection as opposed to running it on a wireless network. That would improve it.
The other thing we found because of bandwidth, and I'm not sure this is going to fix the issue, Janet, with you right now, but if, if you could turn your video off and we know what you look like now, and just give the presentation in audio, that may allow us to get you uninterrupted to hear you. Actually, I should talk to my IT people whether that would actually help or not. Okay, we're going to send an IT person in there with you too, Janet, right now. Go ahead and try to begin speaking and see if we can hear you.
All right, Your Honor and Councilmembers. You had a workshop about this item tonight, which is, I'm guessing you're not, because I started.
Yeah, we heard parts of you there, but you went out.
Still not hearing me?
You're in and out. Ryan's coming down, our IT person, right now to help.
Mayor, I think I could, yeah. I think I can probably run through this. As you said, we had, had a workshop on it and Janet could, if she's got something else that she wants to add, I can just run through it. So as you know, as you know, Mayor and Council, that we receive CDBG funds as a pass-through from the federal government to use for the purposes of serving low to moderate income residents. And we have an allocation on an annual basis that, that we approve. We have a public hearing. We distribute those funds. In the case of the COVID scenario, we were allocated an additional $168,055 in funds as an extra supplement related specifically to assisting people with COVID issues in the community with emergency assistance through the CARES Act that was approved at the, the federal government level. So as you know, as we talked about in workshops, staff went out to the community and our community providers and asked them to submit proposals where the funds could be used. And we received two applications for use of just under $100,000, $90,000 approximately from Prop for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, food assistance, staff assistance, you know, mainly for their, their programs. They already have a program in place for providing rental assistance and food assistance. So tonight, the proposal is to provide $90,000 of the $168,000 to Prop. And then we also received a request for $880, just under $1,000 from Senior Community Services, another group we previously provided community development block grant dollars to for personal protective equipment, PPE, for seniors that help with home chore projects that are also a part of our home program. So the action tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the use of almost $100,000 or $91,000 in funds of the 168, in that it also updates our action plan where we can provide those funds to those in need. And as you also heard in the workshop, some of the money can be provided retroactively. If the money's been spent, we can still reimburse people with housing and food needs, but we also can do this going forward as well.
And it has to be directly tied by federal direction to the COVID virus crisis?
That, that's correct, Mayor.
So, so counsel, just, I'll let you have an opportunity to say a word or two as well. Just to repeat the understanding here that this is federal money, federal dollars. So these are pass-through dollars. We're getting the opportunity to receive them and then spend them on COVID issues related to the COVID crisis. Just to let the public know as well that the, the council has approved this specific expenditure this evening, but we also had a conversation at our workshop about what are some of the priorities that we feel rise to the surface? The, the need is so great out there in, in so many areas, right, of society. And at the end of the day, we're not going to be able as government at almost any level to address every need as much as we wish we could. But what, one thing that the council did discuss is the idea that food insecurity, and I'm not speaking for everybody and council members, please feel free to add in, but it seemed in our conversation that food insecurity was very important. And, and whether it's number one or rose to the top, it was just very important for us to consider as we get access to money. And then rental assistance became really important because, again, thinking of families and children, if, if, you know, you don't have enough to eat and then you lose your place to live, how critical that is. And then this third piece that came up during our conversation was mental health assistance or issues with mental health. So it's not that there's not others. There are. There are many agencies that address those three, but those were buckets of need that we discussed at the council level. And I'm going to now be quiet and let my council colleagues weigh in on their thoughts on any of this as well. And feel free to add to what I said or even correct it. But, um, council members, what else would you like to share? Councilmember Narayan?
Mayor, just one more item that probably we should add to that is senior care.
Yes. And, and we also talked about in relation to food, right, and, and other issues. But seniors do have particular specific needs as well. Yes, we did. Thank you so much. Counsel, anything? Yes, Councilmember Aho?
And the other thing is, this does leave us, what, $50,000 or $60,000 as a remainder to deal with anything that comes up in the future, in the near future, beyond what we're doing with Prop and, and, and the other groups. So I think it's a, it's a good thing to get the money out into the hands of people that need it expeditiously and, and to, to make that money work for them. So just good that we can, we can help out in some small way.
Totally. And, and as we go through the year, I'm not committing anything and nor this government have completely, what's, what's large pockets or whatever. We don't have pools of money sitting around, but there, there will be opportunity for us to look at other funding sources as well. And again, it's not unlimited, but we're not just limiting ourselves to just this, you know, $168,000 that came through the federal government. And I want to add too, that there are private groups out there like Prop who we are assisting and they're raising their own money, but the Eden Prairie Community Foundation has the fund that if you, as a private citizen, want to additionally help, because as I started out saying, the need is so great across so many spectrums that no one group, no one agency, no one government can, can meet this need. And we really do, we, meaning the people of Eden Prairie and those of us in leadership, just so deeply appreciate those that are in this crisis right now that have been blessed, that are, are able, that have good jobs and have not lost income and they're able to assist others. Please find ways to, you know, contribute that money. And we have amazing nonprofits here in Eden Prairie, just phenomenal, the people that are working and volunteering within them. Prop, Prop Shop, Meals on Wheels, Eden Prairie Community Foundation. We just have, I'm just so proud of the volunteers here in the community. Other council members that might wish to say something here? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Freiberg?
One, one thing we did discuss that we should maybe just, you know, just mention is that down the road, we realize the impact this is having on small businesses also. And keep exploring, you know, the avenues there because there's going to be a lot of small businesses hurting. And, you know, we discussed it, you know, that would really be good to expand. Anyone has some suggestions that can help us out as far as how we can help, you know? Anyone has some suggestions that can help us out as far as how we can help, you know, be greatly appreciated.
No, thank you for bringing that. We did bring up, we've been in contact with the Chamber of Commerce and Pat Mulquie. And at this moment, and I'm not in any way saying that these are sufficient because as I said, the need is so much greater than all the resources that people have. But there are funding streams to help small businesses that are beginning to loosen up and come through county, state and federal sources. But we definitely want as a city to be sensitive and be as helpful as we can. And if we at some point need to address how we can do more, we absolutely will because our business community is critical to the success of this community. And we just appreciate our business community here in our city. Okay, looking just to see if anyone's got their hand in there or no. Let's go ahead and have a motion then to approve. We can still have a conversation after that, but a motion to approve the CDBG CV funds. Councilmember Narayan, I think I saw a hand first. I'll have maybe Councilmember Nelson second. Did Councilmember Narayan, were you asking a question or do you want to make the motion?
No, no, I'll move the motion, but if Nelson, at least first, that's possible.
Well, I think you were first, but if you want to defer, I'll, we'll let Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, go ahead.
All right, move to adopt the resolution approving the substantial amendment to 2019 CBDG Annual Action Plan to allocate $168,055 of community development block grant coronavirus funds.
Councilmember Narayan, I'll let you second since you're.
I'll second that.
Nice to give that up. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. Mr. Geto and council members, is there anything else to come before the council this evening?
Mayor, there is not.
So I'm looking at the council members. Okay. So I like superlatives and I like, like the best and the first and all that. This is the longest virtual city council member meeting in the history of Eden Prairies, 150 some years of history. So we just made history this evening with an hour and five minute virtual meeting.
Your Honor, if I could?
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor, I was hoping to be able to give an update on recreation programs and facilities to you tonight.
Oh, please. You've just got in under the wire.
Thank you.
Go for it. Did I miss that on the entire? Was it on the agenda that I missed?
You didn't.
Oh, okay. You, 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 please, give us an update.
Thank you. Your Honor, council members, I did want to update you on what's been happening in the Parks and Recreation Department. Our department has been pretty drastically impacted with the COVID coming through. And we've had to make some pretty drastic changes to our city services and also facilities. So I just want to take you back just a little bit. On March 13th, we took action to cancel all of our spring programs as well as close our recreation facilities indefinitely. So that means the community center, senior center, outdoor center and the art center. On the park side of things, we have never seen as much use as we're seeing now. A fairly nice day, even on a weekday, looks like a very nice Saturday in July. Parking lots are packed, the trails are being used, people are making good use of our park system. And it's great to see that part of health and wellness and, and people being able to get out and, and relieve hopefully some of that stress that they're under. But with that comes extra and additional maintenance that we need to do. And so we're addressing that as well. But mainly what I want to address you on tonight is what we are going to be doing going forward. Our recreation programmers are usually working on three months and six months in advance. And with so much uncertainty, we have had to make some changes and some somewhat speculation about the future. And we need some time in advance to be able to prepare and get ready. And so that leads me to what we plan to do next and what we need to do next. Because thinking about the safety of our residents and our participants, we're also thinking about the safety of our staff. And the other piece is staffing is really important to making any of our programs go. And so to be able to hire, to be able to train and to make sure that they can be put in a safe situation is really important and it takes some lead up time to be able to do that. So what we want to do tomorrow is look at canceling our recreation programs through July 5th. We hope that maybe after July 5th, we can be in a position to be able to address some of the programming needs, if that's appropriate from a safety and a health standpoint. We might be coming back in a few weeks to let you know that we're in a position where we even have to extend that out a little farther. But we have been trying to do this in a fairly methodical way and in a way that allows us some flexibility for the future for whatever we might be able to do. So that's the information for programs that we would put out tomorrow. We'd be in contact with anybody that's already registered for a program. But we also wouldn't be taking any new registrations between now and July 5th for any of the programs that would occur during that time. We would also let our public know and remind them that our facilities, the community center, outdoor center, senior center, art center, are still closed indefinitely until it's appropriate to open up. And we wouldn't take any new rentals or speculate to take new rentals until after July 5th. So to buy some time and not have to continue to cancel on people, we want to wait and see if it will be appropriate. When you think about our park facilities, this is a huge time of year. At our barns, the Riley Barn, Homeward Hills Barn, all of our outdoor pavilions, graduation parties, weddings, it is a big time of year. What we're looking to do there, and we've done this incrementally already in the spring when there haven't been as many. Right now, we're looking to go through the governor's stay at home order in terms of canceling on people. So right through May 18th. Our other scenarios that have worked well in the last month or so is then to after May 18th, we're continuing to call people now to say, you have a reservation between May 18th and the middle of June. We are canceling on you right now, but we're also not optimistic that that is going to be able to happen. So we want you to know that. In some cases, people have told us, yep, we know we were going to call you fairly soon and tell you we're not doing our event. So it gets us some good collaborative working with some of our residents. It also gives them a heads up that we don't know for sure yet that their event will be able to happen or not able to happen. So they, they're kind of in the, in it with us as we see what happens moving forward. We've also suggested that we would cancel the concert series at Starling Lake through the month of June. And bringing large groups of people together isn't something that we see in the real near future. But maybe as we get to July, we can come up with a way to do some of those things as a social distancing scenario. We have two big events that are coming up, People Fest and also the hometown celebration. We don't want to cancel those, but we know we need to do them differently. And so they're going to take on more of a virtual experience. And over the next few weeks, we'll be able to unveil some of those types of experience that we hope without having to bring people together by the thousands in the next month or two and into early July, we hope that we can still commemorate and give people an experience and hopefully a shared community experience. So we're going to be working on the details of that. Council members are going to be included and we want to have that participation, not just with our community members, but between the community members and our council members. So stay tuned for some of that and we'll pass some more ideas on to you. You know, on the park maintenance side, all of our recreation programmers, the people that you sometimes see at council meetings, sometimes accepting awards for the work that they've done, they have now converted over to a high percentage of their time where they're helping out with park maintenance. Because we're not currently hiring on the usual seasonal park maintenance that we would in the past. So some of our programmers are know mowing, painting, helping with plantings, those kinds of things. And we're recognizing that that's a way to keep them engaged, but also to help us save money on some of those seasonals. So where we can, we're trying to make any of those good financial decisions that we also can. But we do recognize that there is a need for them to still be in the programming mode to interact with current customers, current renters, to be thinking about how do we continue to engage our community as, you know, this continues farther into the summer? And then planning for how do we open up when we're able to open up? And what are some of those best practices that we need to be putting into place when our facilities are able to open up and be put back to good use? Many times so far, we've waited to hear what the governor might say, not necessarily thinking that that's going to have a full impact on bringing groups together quite yet. But at least we understand what our state is guiding us towards. And some of our messaging and the way that we speak about things can be, you know, in step and reflective of what the state and the Department of Health are giving as guidelines as well. So we would look to put all of that into play tomorrow, contacting those residents and participants in plenty of time to give them an, an understanding of what they might need to put in place. Some of our, our summer camp programs, people use that in place of putting their kids in daycare or having to stay home and take care of their kids. So it's really unfortunate that we can't do some of that dual purpose and dual service that we usually would do in addition to providing those kids a great recreation experience, but also to supplement that kind of daycare side of things for their family too. So with that, I'd certainly stand for any questions or any thoughts that you might have and can take it from there.
Councilmember Nelson. You're on mute. Oh, there you go.
Okay, I've been talking to a number of people who have grade school children around town. I've been calling on a variety of folks and they would like the Parks Department to know how thankful they are. They have some place that their kids can run around that's not going around the block for the thousandth time or already have used every part of their own yard or area. So they would like to say a big thank you to you and please keep it up because it's absolutely essential for their families right now.
We appreciate that, Councilmember Nelson, and we have heard that feedback as well. You know, unfortunately, early on, we did hear about that there was potential transmission from place structures. And so we did close those. It's one of the only things that we've closed off to our public in the park system. We've been asking our public to use their best common sense and judgment to stay socially distant when they do other things. Hopefully, as time goes on, we hear some data and get some good guidance that hopefully fairly soon, we could open those back up because that is a big part of what especially younger kids and their families use when they come to the parks. But there hasn't been any shortage of parents on the tennis court with their children or shooting baskets with their kids or grandparents shooting baskets with their grandkids. It's, it's really been rewarding to see. Take a drive around to the parks on a regular basis to see what is happening and how people are using them right now. And there are some good stories out there about how families are re-engaging in the outdoors and seeing the benefits and the value of having that.
Thank you, Mr. Lighthammer. Yeah, we do, again, this is kind of a night of gratitude, certainly for staff, but the Parks and Rec Department is amazing. We have phenomenal parks in our town. People talk about why did you move Eden Prairie and top three, it always makes parks and trails, you know, schools are in there. And the great city council sometimes is in there and things like that. But, but parks definitely, that was Justin, but parks definitely get in there. Without being in any way an expert on this, so many of us have just absorbed so much information that's out there right now on the COVID-19. And of course, there's a lot of, a lot of information out there, right, coming at us from all different sides. And I, I guess from a government side, we pay special close attention, especially local government, so that we can stay on top of making the best decisions, right, in the moment. And we, we definitely are leaning on experts as much as we can and we lean on our county and state colleagues. And of course, the governor, he has the authority and, and I think the expertise that, or at least he has experts around him. With that being said, couple of things that I just, you know, because Mr. Lighthammer raised this good issue and just wanting to know why we are responding as a city of Eden Prairie the way we are, besides the fact that we've been directed by the state in many cases. But the virus is not going away. I mean, that's, there are some givens out there, I think, that we all have heard so much. There's no pre-virus immunity. So if we come in contact with, to it, with it today, next week, next month, the virus might be slightly mutating, but it's staying fairly stable. And we will get it, whether we get it asymptomatic or, I mean, there's all kinds of issues like that. But the point is it's out there. So it's going to continue to roll through the population. So as these states open up and as Minnesota begins to open up, don't anyone think that we beat it or that we made it so the virus isn't still out there, still out there? So if we open up, we will start to spread the virus again. Now, maybe as a government, we can, we try to control that or we maintain the role somehow or we make sure our medical hospital system's not overwhelmed. I think that's the point of why we've been doing what we've been doing. So some things I think are still a given. I don't think there's going to be any large gatherings probably across the state of Minnesota the rest of this year. Sad, really sad. I'm not sure of that. We're not sure of the state fair, but probably not. And so Eden Prairie, whereas Jay has talked about looking at what we're going to be doing with our Parks and Rec, just keep that in the back of your mind, probably because the virus will be around until a vaccine, probably no large gathering. Social distancing will probably be part of our lives for the year to come. Masks will be, you know, around and encouraged probably for the rest of the year, whether some people choose not to, to wear them or not. So just know that as we as a city try to be sensitive and responsive, we're trying to do what's best for the health and safety of our people. And there's also the piece of, you know, wanting people to get back to some semblance of normalcy, right? And so as, as much as it's incredibly difficult for the federal government to be in a decision-making spot and the state government, I, I think our governments are doing a, well, I'm so thrilled, especially I guess because I live in Minnesota. I'll just say this, I'm so thrilled with the responses, the way our Minnesota government has been. And I know from our colleagues and the county, they've been doing such a great job as well. So we're doing the best we can. Feel free to continue to email us, give us your opinion. Many of you do and I try to respond and I know our council members are doing that as well to everyone that writes in as best we can. Just know that it's not easy, right? We're just trying to do the best we can for the good of all of you. Counsel, any, any, any final words? We're setting our record even more here. That's just perfectly fine. We still had a fairly short meeting. So Councilmember Aho, Nelson, Narayan, Freiberg, anything? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
It was that, sorry, I wasn't looking that one time. Councilmember Aho. And then I believe Councilmember Narayan raised his hand to second. Is that correct?
I second that.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. With that, the May 5th, 2020 council meeting is adjourned.